Welcome, everybody, to Thurston County Planning Commission Wednesday, January 6, 2021 meeting. So let's start off with introductions and Tyler, you're up in the top corner.
Tyler Zuhuski at large.
Don?
On the hand, District One.
Eric?
Eric Casino, District Two.
And Doug?
Doug Carmen, District Two.
So there's a phone phone number there. I don't know who for that is. Is that somebody?
Raul is here.
Perfect.
District One. There you go.
Thanks, Raul. Good to see you. We're kind of.
Yeah, likewise.
Been having terrible reception problems.
Oh, no worries. Okay, so let's start off with the approval of the agenda.
No move.
And second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed? So next, we're looking for the approval of the meeting minutes from December 16, 2020.
No move.
And second.
Moving second, and all those in favor, please say aye, signify by aye.
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 Are you opposed? So we're going to move on to the public communications and Polly will be kind of taking that piece. Please note, if you have some comments, that we do have a three minutes per person and it'll be, you'll see the timer there. Green light, you have a minute, two and a half minutes. When it gets yellow, you have 30 seconds. And then on the red, please kind of wrap up your thoughts and we'll go from there. So when you come on, please introduce yourself, your name and general area where you live. That would be great. So Polly?
Okay, it looks like we have one person, Barry Halverson, so.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Barry Halverson. I come from the Lake Lawrence community area. I'd like to start off by thanking Andrew for the email he sent me on the 24th of December. That was informative, Andrew. Thank you. I'm looking forward to the discussion that you outlined at the end of that email. And based on that, I may have some additional questions for you following this meeting. I also appreciated the comments from the Commissioners on the 16th of December. Reference the Lake Lawrence reach areas that I think might lead to some of the discussion by Andrew tonight. Specifically, Eric Casino and Doug Carmen. So with that, I'll stop my communication and let you get on with business on the SMP. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Barry. So is there anybody else out there that would like to speak? Going once? Going twice? Going three times? Nobody else? Is that anybody? Is that everybody, Polly?
Yeah, nobody else's hand is up, so you're right. That's it.
Okay, we're moving on. So we're off to the work session on the Shoreline Master Program. All yours, Andrew.
Okay, great. Good evening, everybody. Happy New Year. So I'm gonna launch into a PowerPoint presentation that I have prepared for the first portion of this work session. And Raul, and to anyone who's following at home, I understand if you are not watching the feed, if you're calling in, you may not, you can't see what I'm sharing my screen. So if you go to the Planning Commission's website, the PowerPoint presentation I'm about to share is posted on that site as of this afternoon. So I'll go ahead and share my screen. Are we seeing a PowerPoint?
Yes.
Hopefully we are. Great. Okay. Okay, so tonight, we are, I brought back some information for you related to recent public testimony regarding Lake Lawrence and shoreline environment designations. I will also have a general update for you on some items that were discussed at recent meetings. And then time and will the Planning Commission, depending, we will then continue on with our continued review of Chapter 9500 of the SMP. So for some background here, there's been a lot of discussion by the Planning Commission and by the public lately about how people can verify whether the shoreline environment designations proposed for their shoreline are the right ones or or to have the county kind of reassess based on information that they they provide. Right now, we have three of those requests in front of us. One of them is about Lake Lawrence, which you'll hear about tonight. At the last Planning Commission meeting, that was the direction from Planning Commission was to take a look at that one, bring it back and provide some information for Planning Commission. And then there are two other inquiries related to Offutt Lake, and the plan is to come back with those to Planning Commission at the next meeting. But essentially, the thing I want you to keep in mind, the bottom line here is that is the the shoreline environment designations have all been proposed for the SMP. But they are not final. Everything we're talking about here with the SMP is, you know, you all are currently making it. So the Planning Commission does have the discretion to direct staff make changes to shoreline environment designations for a given shoreline reach or to, you know, the rules within the SMP. It's 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 in your discretion. And we have that criteria for the shoreline environment designations to guide that discussion when we.
Andrew, can I just interrupt you for a sec? I'm just kind of curious as are these inquiries a result of the postcard being sent out or just people like?
Thus far, no. Thus far, it's just been people who are aware that the update's going on and are tracking it. So in this instance, it's Mr. Halverson and the other folks that are down in Lake Lawrence who have brought this one to our attention. And then there are some local landowners along Offutt Lake that have done similarly. So.
Jim, I think this will be a trial run for us because once we do our public outreach, postcard mailing, issue the draft formally, are accepting public comment over that several week period, have the open house. I'm sure we'll get additional inquiries. So using this as a good example for the deliberation and getting familiar with the criteria for the SEDs and making sure we have good rationale for any kind of changes to the proposals is going to be kind of useful. Useful exercise to tonight and next time.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Jennifer. And also, I would add, please feel free to not only, as we go through this, not only discuss the substance of the review of these reaches on Lake Lawrence, but also, you know, the the way that this information is being conveyed to you, if there's additional information you're looking for or an alternate style that would, you know, be better for your comprehension and decision making, just let me know. Okay, so first, a little bit of background, a refresher on some, a few points. This whole conversation builds on a variety of conversations that the Planning Commission has had regarding shoreline environment designations and multiple meetings where the public has discussed the shoreline environment designations. At the bottom of the slide here, I've put several dates up where shoreline environment designations have been either the focus or a significant portion of conversation at a Planning Commission briefing. But local jurisdictions, it is it is an inherent part of the shoreline master program update to inventory and characterize shorelines and then use criteria to designate shoreline environment designations for the different shoreline reaches. That's sort of background foundational work to doing an SMP update. Ecology provides guidelines for doing so. I've listed a few of the statutes there for the guidance and the criteria for doing this work. And ultimately, earlier, at an earlier phase of the SMP process, the county elected to use five of six of Ecology's recommended designations and then develop criteria consistent with the WAC to go along with those designations. And I've listed them out here, which they should all be familiar, but just in case, shoreline residential, urban conservancy, rural conservancy, natural, and then aquatic. So just to kind of briefly touch on the shoreline environment designations report, that document, which is available on the shoreline's website, outlines all the conclusions that were made about the different shoreline reaches for lakes, rivers, and marine shorelines and describes the criteria for shoreline environment designations and then the rationale for proposing a given shoreline environment designation for a given shoreline reach. That document uses that criteria and sort of matches the different shorelines to a designation essentially. It does so by taking a look at the information that was gathered during the inventory and characterization process and then evaluating that alongside the criteria for shoreline environment designations to propose the most appropriate shoreline environment designation for shoreline reaches. And efforts were made during that process to protect the ecological function of shorelines, looking at the proposed pattern of development and also to be consistent with policies for restoration of shorelines. So generally speaking, and kind of the course way that that, looking at this in a course manner, rather, the document describes how reaches were designated natural, if they appeared to have high quality habitat function or minimal shoreline modification. They were designated shoreline residential if they were platted or already developed for relatively high density development and showed more signs, signs of more intensive uses. And one of those criteria was whether the majority of the lot area was within shoreline jurisdiction, namely smaller lots closer to the shoreline versus lots that were larger and only a portion of the lot was in shoreline jurisdiction. So those filters were applied, looking at whether it appeared to meet natural or shoreline residential criteria. And if not, a designation of urban or rural conservancy was applied to all areas above the ordinary high watermark. So I have these, some cut and paste from the said report here. The purpose, the criteria and other information for the different environments that are mainly for reference. We can come back to them if we need to, but just to show you, this is kind of what that looks like when it's laid out there in the document. And we'll be using these again shortly. So I put the ones up that I think are most remain to the discussion tonight. Okay, so we've received some questions about the shoreline environment designations that are proposed for a few different reaches of Lake Lawrence. Namely, Reach LLA 5 to LLA 6, which is Lake Lawrence 5 to Lake Lawrence Reach 6, is currently designated as a rural shoreline, aka shoreline residential. And it also is mapped that way. All the the most recent shoreline mapping shows it mapped as shoreline residential. But the said report concludes that the proposed designation is rural conservancy. And the question is, clarify which reaches proposed and why? And then the next question was, two adjacent reaches on Lake Lawrence, 6 to 1 and 1 to 2 have been already developed to some degree, but they're proposed to be rural conservancy, not shoreline residential. And can we clarify why? Okay, so for context, here is Lake Lawrence. So on the left side of your screen, you can see the map of the county with the yellow circle in the southeastern portion of the county. That is where Lake Lawrence is located, south of Yell. And on the right, it's just a larger blow up of the lake. And we're going to be focusing with my cursor, if you can see my cursor. But we're going to be focusing from around the northern portion of the lake here, all the way around to about here, or those three reaches. So the eastern side of the lake is where we're going to focus tonight. Okay, the first reach that we're going to look at is Lake Lawrence 5 to Lake Lawrence 6, which is along the north and extending down into the northeastern portion of the the lake. So on the left side of the screen is an aerial photograph of that reach and the yellow squiggly lines denote the boundaries of that that shoreline reach. And then on the right side, this is a screen capture from the shoreline environment designations tool that has been prepared as part of our public outreach. And this is just going to show that the proposed designation, which is the faint kind of transparent layer, is a shoreline residential. And the mapped proposal is, or sorry, the current designation is shoreline residential and the mapped proposed one is shoreline residential as well. This is, this is the reach where our said report says rural conservancy, but everything else says shoreline residential. So what we're going to do is take a look at this reach and we're going to look at the different criteria and and kind of match what's on the ground to what does the criteria say and kind of walk you through, walk you through that. So all of these reaches are going to be outside of incorporated municipalities and outside urban growth areas. So that applies globally here. So we're going to look at those other criteria. This reach largely is not supporting low intensity resource based uses. You can see in the middle there, there's that one strip of forested land. That is the sole portion of this reach that is in resource based use. Those parts, that that large parcel is in current use for timber. The other, all the rest of these parcels are, you know, fairly densely developed residential uses. This area is supporting human uses, but is also subject to environmental limitations. That's another thing that's kind of, kind of going to apply globally here because the way that looks, it looks at wetlands, it looks at flood plains and any lake is going to have a flood plain associated with it and potentially be characterized as a wetland. So this one applies, but it applies broadly. Could it support low intensity water, water dependent uses? It's already supporting higher intensive uses. The shoreline here has been altered more extensively than some of the other areas we're going to look at tonight around the lake. And then as far as recreational, cultural and historic and public access value, a lot of these parcels are individually residentially developed. The inventory and characterization does not note any specific cultural or historic value or public access. But it does mention that other dash cultural is a characteristic of this reach. And it does not appear to meet the designation criteria for the natural environment. I could back up if anyone's interested, but but generally speaking, shorelines that are going to meet the natural criteria are those that are ecologically intact, are largely undisturbed areas of shoreline, retain the majority of their ecological function and are generally free of structural modification and and human uses, which this shoreline in my analysis does not meet that. So looking at this exact same reach, but now we're looking at the shoreline residential criteria. Does it meet the criteria for natural? My, my opinion is no. Does it meet the definition for or the criteria for rural conservancy? It appears to meet some of them. But looking at, the way that you kind of got to look at this is which environment is going to be the best fit, right? These criteria are the same, you know, it's, you're looking at them, that's black and white, but all shorelines are gonna, you know, no two shorelines are going to be alike. So trying to look at what is the best fit. So in this case, do we see predominantly single family residential development along this reach? I see a lot of that. Is the majority of the lot area of these lots within shoreline jurisdiction? These lots are smaller and closer to the shoreline and I could go back to this here. I don't know how well you can see, but on the right side there, the, that pink strip is the shoreline jurisdiction. It's essentially 200 feet landward of the ordinary high watermark or the best mapping we have for that feature. And you can see that a lot of these lots are mostly encumbered by, by that shoreline jurisdiction. And then have ecological functions been impacted by more intense uses? I would see evidence to support that. You see homes that are pretty close to the water in a lot of places. A lot of vegetation, native vegetation has been removed and you see the installation of a lot of docks and bulkheads along the shoreline. Okay, so moving south, continuing down the eastern shore of the lake. So we're looking at Reach Lake Lawrence 6 to Lake Lawrence 1. It's not a very big reach. You can see on the left hand side, it's about 10 or 12 parcels. And on the right side, you can see that it was, is currently considered rural slash shoreline residential and is proposed to change to rural conservancy in the update. So looking at the criteria, this parcel is, this is the rural conservancy criteria for this reach. It is outside of incorporated cities and outside urban growth areas, as are all of these that we're going to look at. This parcel doesn't, or sorry, this reach does not appear to be supporting a lot of low intensity resource use. It appears to be largely accommodating residential uses. It is supporting human uses, but again, going to be subject to environmental limitations. And based on its current condition, it appears that more intense uses could potentially impact shoreline functions. Low intensity uses could be more appropriate in this environment. I did not note that there was any sort of significant cultural, historical, recreational, public access values that were noted in any of the reporting. So for the inventory characterization, shoreline environment designation report did not see anything specific for this reach. And again, I would, I would say that this does not really seem to meet the designation criteria for the natural environment when you look at those things. You know, is it, is it intact? Is it free of modification and uses? Undisturbed areas of shoreline, there appears to be some modification of shoreline here. So looking again, the same reach with shoreline residential. Again, it does not appear to meet the criteria for natural in my, in my analysis. It does appear to meet some of the criteria for rural conservancy. It is predominantly single family residential uses. The difference here between this reach and the one that we just looked at, it, it does appear these lots are larger and that for many of them, the majority of the lot area actually does fall outside of shoreline jurisdiction. And ecological functions, yes, have been impaired by, by modification and use. But in this instance, the vegetation here compared to what we just looked at, there's more vegetation on the ground. The homes are set back further from the water and there appears to be less alteration of the shoreline itself compared to the reach that we just looked at. Continuing south, Reach Lake Lawrence 1 to Lake Lawrence 2. Again, on the left side, you can see the boundaries of that. It kind of comes down the south or the east edge of the lake and then comes south. And on the right hand side, you can see that this reach is currently conservancy. That's the kind of transparent layer. And then it is proposed to be rural conservancy. So it's that walk across designation is what's proposed. Okay, looking at the criteria, yes, it's outside the UGA. Residential use is on a majority of these lots. If you look at the south portion of this reach, this, this reach is kind of doing double duty. It's, it's got residential uses, but it also has some agricultural uses. Those two large parcels that have forest and wetland on them at the south end there are actually in current use. They're in the assessors agriculture open space program. This part, or excuse me, this reach, like all of them, is supporting human uses, but subject to environmental limitations. It has some degree of, it has some degree of natural character along the shoreline, but there has been some degree of alteration. So potentially, some of those lower intensity uses may be more appropriate. And again, I did not note that there was any recorded significant recreational, cultural, historical or public access potential in this reach in in the documents that I looked at. I would also say it does not meet the designation criteria for natural environment, just based on what we can see there with the alteration. And even the, that, the south portion there, if you look at the inventory, the appendix A, which is all the the guts of what they looked at for each reach, it talks about modification to the shoreline vegetation in those areas for agriculture. So does not appear to meet the natural criteria.
Andy?
Just.
How come, when they were, when you were deciding where these reach boundaries are, this particular one, 1 to 2, I mean, they seem like two different uses altogether. It seems like it would have made a whole lot more sense if your reach boundary would have been at the, before you hit those two big parcels.
Yeah, and I don't know for sure, going back to that history, I think you'd even have to go further back than the original inventory. Because I think going back to the original SMP, I think that that is the reach. And then when it was updated, and and this, this land has changed over time, right? So in 1990, it looked different. Why, why it was not broken up in 2013? I, I can't say. I mean, we can go back and.
Well, wouldn't it, wouldn't it be easier to change the, the break in the reaches than it would be the SEDs? Like if we moved this, if we moved that one on the right side, down below those smaller parcels above the, the forested land there, that would solve half the problems.
I think it's two different issues. So I think there's, I think there is a question of, and Mr. Halverson, and in one of his more recent emails to me, was kind of touching on that of, you know, if there's a degree of my word, it's been a day, the words are skipping. If there is, it's kind of a spectrum of conditions on a reach, right? Is there any, can you make them smaller? Can you, can you cut these based on changes in conditions? And I, I think that's all part of this discussion, potentially could do that. I think the question would still remain from citizens is, okay, even if you did that, you know, still questioning is rural conservancy the most appropriate designation for those residential ones you can see there in the upper right of that picture? So yes, I think we could look at potentially changing out where that reach break occurs, but that other question still needs to be answered.
Yeah, well, I mean, it, it looked like it'd be real easy to change where the reach break is in all those places that are being used residential. Still, two thirds of them are better have docks and they're built out and they might be deep lots that a lot of it goes past the 200 foot mark, but that's only because of where the road was placed. That's not because of anything that has to do with the lake. I mean, to me, this just seems like a no brainer that those should be shoreline residential. And if those two southern lots there were rural conservancy and that's where the break was, that would make a whole lot more sense.
We're going to get there. We're, we're going to get there, talk about shoreline residential for this potential reach. And then that's, that's the discussion, right? That's, I'm, I am queuing this up and then you, you guys are going to let her rip. Okay. Uh, where was I? Okay. So looking at this, this reach again, against the shoreline residential criteria, does it appear to meet the criteria for natural? In my opinion, no. Does it appear to meet resident or rural conservancy? It does appear to meet some of those criteria. Is it predominantly a single family residential development? I guess that depends on how you want to slice it, right? Because the majority of the parcels have residential use on them. The majority of the shoreline jurisdiction, it's kind of more of a wash, half and half agriculture or more natural conditions versus residential development. The majority of the lot area for these lots would not be in shoreline jurisdiction, which is one of these criteria for designating shoreline residential. And then have ecological functions been impacted by more intense use? Again, I think you can see some evidence of that. You can see that there's loss of vegetative cover and installation of lawns. There are docks there, et cetera. These homes again are further back than what we saw at the north portion of the lake and that reach 5 to 6. A lot of these homes are 100, 150 feet back from the ordinary high watermark. There does appear to be less modification to the shoreline itself than elsewhere around the lake. So some information again that I want everyone to consider before we get into some, you guys, you know, making some decisions is that a reach may not fit neatly into one box and you might look at different characteristics of a reach and think that it could potentially fit into more than one said. And that's, I think that's, if you look at the criteria and how they're written, I mean, you can make those interpretations. So that's what we're here to do, is to try to find the, you know, what makes the most sense. Keep in mind, what's the most appropriate shoreline environment designation and tie that back to the criteria that's used to, to make these proposals. And I did want to point out that both the shoreline residential said and the rural conservancy said allow residential uses. So just because there's residential use on, on a shoreline does not automatically make it shoreline residential. In some cases, it will, but it doesn't automatically have to do so. And then I included a handy dandy chart here that we can refer back to if we need to, that just shows here are these reaches. Here's what they're currently designated as, and here's what they are proposed to be. So I will briefly move into what I conclude and then we'll let that be fodder for your discussion. So looking at Reach Lake Lawrence 5 to 6, which is the first one, to my analysis, appear, that would actually appear to best meet the criteria for shoreline residential. That is how it's currently mapped. That is what it currently is. If you look at this, it does appear to predominantly be single family development. The majority of these lots are within shoreline jurisdiction. And there appears to be a relatively high degree of, you know, impacting ecological function. You have a lot of loss of vegetation, bulkheads, you know, homes closer to the water, all those sorts of things that we look at when we think shoreline residential environment. So in this instance, staff would propose the planning commission consider amending the said report to reflect that this reach be shoreline residential. And then that we document that decision for the record when we send this to ecology, that we have done this analysis. So for Lake Lawrence 6 to 1, in my opinion and analysis, this appears to best meet the criteria for the rural conservancy designation. My rationale for that are that the majority of the lots are not fully within shoreline jurisdiction. You do see higher ecological function and less shoreline modification of this reach than comparing it to the one to the north. And the homes are set back a little bit further. And it also does not appear to meet natural. So we would not. So we would not, I would not recommend calling it natural. The, and again, the planning commission, it is within your discretion to keep the proposed designation as it is or to direct staff to make a change if the criteria support that change. Uh, Lake Lawrence one to two, uh, i- in my analysis appears to best meet the criteria of the rural conservancy designation. Um, and again, conversation could be had about where the reach break should occur, but I'm I'm talking about the reach as a whole. The majority of these lots are outside of SMA jurisdiction, um, you know, which is that two hundred foot strip, generally speaking, off the ordinary high watermark. Um, these, these, this shoreline appears to have higher ecological function or and less modification than a traditional shoreline residential shoreline that you might think of. And the homes again are set back further in some cases over a hundred and fifty feet from the ordinary high watermark. And it would not appear to meet the criteria of natural. So in my opinion, the planning commission could take that off the table. And again, uh, planning commission may keep a proposed designation as is or may direct staff to change it. If the planning commission believes the criteria support that change. So I am going to pause there and uh let you guys talk and I can keep this up if it's useful or switch back to your faces, whatever's clever. So.
Well, I guess since I'm the only one that has an opinion on this, I'll I'll kind of restate what I'm thinking here. Well, while I understand that reach five to six is more intense development than six to one or one to two. I still think that six to one is certainly um fitting shoreline residential better than rural conservancy. And I think that if you moved reach one, the breakpoint for reach one down to just north of that big parcel, those uh seven parcels that are, that are um residential right now between reach one and reach two would also would then go into reach six to one and should also be um shoreline residential. So basically, I think everything north of of that big field that's half, half, half forest, everything from that point north should be should be shoreline residential and that breakpoint and the break should be right there should be LLA one.
Hmm. And I I want to take a look because I I think, I don't know if I can do this while I'm sharing everything, but uh, if you continue around the lake, um, I think the next reach is uh might be fairly small. Uh, potentially could accommodate that so that I I believe the next reach which is LLA two to three is is a smaller strip of shoreline. So it could potentially make more sense to slide that boundary around. Um, that's certainly something that planning.
Yeah, that part, that doesn't really matter, I don't think, what, how we actually name those reaches. But if we just make a breakpoint there instead, so we can get all that that rural or that residential development into shoreline residential, I think we would be best served.
I agree with whatever.
I mean, is it uh just uh ensuring that the property owners can manage their own property or modify the shoreline? Or is there a benefit for preserving what is left? And uh, ensuring that it's protected for the benefit of the whole community? Or is it, I mean?
Yeah, Tyler, you you kind of clued right into the the heart of it. I mean, that's the, that was the intent of characterizing this was to look at the ecological functions that are there and trying to retain what's there. Uh, and and also looking at what's the pattern of development um as well. But you know, and so the the ramifications of this are that what shoreline environment designation is ultimately proposed, that then in turn dictates what is the buffer going to be and what are the, what uses are allowed or not allowed? Or what restrictions or conditions are put on a, on a given use?
I've heard the term, you know, known that loss and uh preserving what we have, right? And uh, if there is an opportunity and these, you know, they've developed their properties and they probably like to manage them in that fashion. And so uh, again, having more habitat for the wildlife and preserving what we have would benefit all the residents on the lake from my perspective. And so I would be in favor of preserving what's left and you know, moving it to that natural.
And I tend to agree with Eric and I think that uh the move to make that residential down to that large parcel makes sense.
As well as I do. I agree with Eric also.
And I don't know what I did here. Um, hang on a sec.
Might have to recuse myself, I don't live on a lake, so.
Uh, okay. Okay, I should be sharing again, wonderful. Okay, so I want to go back then to um the criteria or just make sure that this conversation is grounded in in the criteria and we can take it one by one. Uh, I'm seeing support for the staff recommendation for five to six to change that, officially change that to shoreline residential, um, because that appears to be what makes sense, but then you're looking at six to one here. Okay, so here's the slide that has that one with um you know, with with the criteria. And so, you know, the the trigger point here for me when I was looking at this and kind of trying to recreate what was done in the analysis is looking at, you know, the size of the lot, which is, which factored in, you know, pretty significantly here. And then the degree of alteration of the shoreline, um, you know, comparing something like this to looking a little bit further north with lots that were smaller with homes closer to the water and, you know, a higher degree of shoreline stabilization and all those sorts of things. So that's, that's kind of where my mind went and I'm just trying to get out there that any decisions the planning commission makes, you know, we need to ground them in these criteria uh in order to support that change.
Like shoreline residential clearly is supported with three out of four of the criteria here. So that's a pretty good fit, three out of four.
So, okay, um, I think I'm just, and you know, you're you're, this is kind of getting into my frustration or agita with this whole thing, right? Where these, you know, some of these words, they have definitions, but you know, they different people can look at things and come to different conclusions, right? So, you know, and I want to make sure that we're consistent, these things are consistently applied and um, you know, yeah, that it makes that, that we're making sense. So a planning commission is saying, um,
Well, I'm in favor of your original recommendation, Andrew, so I probably don't know where you're, so.
Okay. Great, yeah, and I'm looking at, you know, and yeah, ultimately we'll come down to a, this I'm looking for nodding heads and seeing who agrees, and I know we've got at least three folks who who feel that way. I I'm just, uh, you know, as staff, want to make sure that we're grounding it in the criteria, that's my.
Do you want a motion?
Um, but, yeah, I mean, we could do that, we could do it that way. And again, we're we're kind of building this process, right? That might be appropriate in this instance where, um, you know, we've got folks who are watching and looking for specific resolution on these issues that may be appropriate. Um, and if possible, you know, if that motion could include a declaration or information relating to these criteria, that would, I think, be useful.
Yeah, the point here is to really well document this for purposes of, remember ecology is the approving authority over over this and also, of course, um, the public scrutiny, but we need to ground this in the criteria. So I would suggest that that be documented in the motion or deliberation of the motion.
Right.
So if if we move the line, which I agree with, and can the college come back and say that, no, that's not correct and just move it back?
Potentially, I mean, they can, but they could do that with any, anything that uh either the planning commissioner, the board puts in the document that they can point to uh a reason why it shouldn't be there. If they can, if they can ground that in how it violates the criteria, then yes, but I mean, that's going to be their fight to fight, but um, yeah, I I I don't. Again, I I I don't know why this was created the way it was, but I I kind of had that in my head when I was looking at this between meetings is this is a very diverse reach of shoreline when you look at how the land use patterns um go from one end to the other. So. All right, uh, is there, so is it motion for?
Yeah, I'll I'll move that, and then I don't know where we want to call that line. You go back a slide or forward a slide, wherever, right, you know, where that last parcel is before the wetlands and the farm country. I would move that we um do uh have the reach go from there and it could go all the way up and be shoreline residential, that the majority of the parcels have houses on it already. And they, so future development of any of the remaining parcels would be limited significantly by the SMP already because of setbacks and um and view blockage. Is that, you need more than that or what?
Uh, well, so just for the record, because we have, we're talking about multiple reaches here. I think, I think the 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 motion is for reach six to one and for one to two, to potentially change those designations to shoreline residential period. And then also to amend, and I can look at different ways to do it, but to amend the uh reach one to two so that it does not include both those developed lots and that southern portion that is largely wetland and forest.
Right.
So.
Okay.
And second, if we need to.
Is that, is that staff's recommendation? Was that your recommendation for those parcels or was, what designation was uh staff?
Uh, so for these, it was not. So my re- my recommendation was to officially change shoreline res- to shoreline residential for that reach to the north that was much more densely developed. Uh, and that we retain the proposal for rural conservancy for for the other reaches. Uh, but this motion is is uh to change everything to shoreline residential and to um move the boundary of this reach.
And I guess maybe just for my own edification and maybe those who are watching, what are the potential generally impacts on those designations to the property owner? And their ability to do.
So the buffers would would be smaller. Uh, and again, I want to stress that we know that critical areas also are in play here, but specifically for the shoreline buffer. Uh, the depend, and it also depends on where the draft lands, right? But the uh, the prevailing uh buffer configurations in the draft are that a shoreline residential parcel would have a fifty foot buffer and rural conservancy, I believe, was a hundred and fifty. I would need to run into the draft really quickly to look, verify that, but it was something like a hundred and twenty-five to one fifty. So it it's a significantly reduced buffer for shoreline residential. Um, and potentially there are going to be more allowances or uses that are allowed in that designation versus a rural conservancy.
But it it would throw those lower fifteen parcels or so into non-compliance, non-conforming.
What, what?
If if these went into rural conservancy instead of shoreline residential, it would make them all non-conforming.
Uh, not necessarily, a lot of these homes that are actually uh just by kind of measuring in geodata are many of them are more than a hundred and fifty feet back from the ordinary high watermark. And that that's kind of part of, you know, the rationale that I made, but um yeah, some, but not all of them, you know, and and I think in reach six to one uh to the north here, these are closer. So, you know, we've looked at three different reaches. As you move further south down the lake, it seems like the homes get a little bit further and further from the shoreline, generally speaking. So.
But because it has houses already, they'll be limited as to how close a new, you know, if it's a vacant parcel, they're still gonna, can't go any closer than what their adjoining houses are.
Yeah.
Like.
That also depends on how the planning commission uh, well, how this document shakes out. Something I'm going to share with you later is an update on the view blockage standards. Uh, there was a discussion by the planning commission to eliminate those requirements from the draft. And uh, according to my research and talking with ecology, that's within your purview to do so. So if the planning commission removes view blockage standards, then and these, any of these undeveloped lots or are shoreline residential, potentially they could be closer um to the water.
I think it's already been moved in second, it hasn't it?
What is the motion? I think we're just looking at uh the LLA six dash one or all of them.
And I I think the, and I'm not a, obviously not a planning commissioner, but the simplest way to state the motion might be that all three of these reaches uh be designated or proposed to be designated shoreline residential and amend the boundaries of reach one to two. That's essentially what what that that motion is, that's what I heard from.
And Don so moved and I seconded.
Right. Okay.
Oh, for the question?
Now.
Just can, can we back up just a sec? I I think we were kind of using Andrew for the motion, maybe a planning commissioner has, should do, make the motion.
All right, I proposed, proposed that the three parcels be designated residential and that the reach boundary be changed for the one so that it does not include the undeveloped properties.
The south.
Is there a second?
Yeah, my second.
Okay. So, is there any, any other discussion? So all those in favor of the motion signify to say nine?
Hi.
All right, any opposed?
Nah.
Okay.
Um, I also want to, I, it might be point of order, uh, if I may, uh, it would be good to hear from Raul because I believe that technically a quorum of the entire planning commission must approve a motion and not, not just, you know, folks in one meeting, but it would take.
Hold with us?
Raul, you are mute.
Uh-oh, had to see unmute, probably.
I just clicked.
There he is. Oh, we lost him again.
I think we have, wasn't it just the majority of the quorum?
I don't think so. Uh, I'm not the expert on planning commission rules and procedures, but I think.
Look it up.
Big stirrings of memory or, and you know, if the four to one, it, that is what it is. You know, uh, if if that stands, I just, I would want to verify that. And I think if we have, we have six bodies here, it would be good to hear from all six if we can. The challenges of doing this virtually versus in a room together.
So we need a simple, let's see, affirmative vote of a simple majority of the appointed members.
And we have.
So simple majority of the appointed members would be five.
Simple majority would actually be three.
It's not of the attending members. It's the appointed members, I'm reading from the rules of procedure. Oh, so Raul says aye, he emailed me.
Okay, okay.
So he is with, so that does make.
Five.
Simple majority.
I am just, I wanted to clear that up, I did not want to think about that at ten o'clock tonight, so.
I think that's the safe way to go.
Yeah.
Following those rules.
Uh, pending any additional discussion on Lake Lawrence, then I will keep moving. Okay, so briefly, I'll jump back into this PowerPoint and then we'll be free of it.
Summer's on the boat and uh two being pulled across the water at Lake Lawrence and I appreciate the lake and so.
Okay.
And for those, I think for those who watch this or are listening, just remember the votes go to what is included in the public hearing draft and the changes that are going to be made for that draft to go forth to the public hearing. So there are going to be additional deliberations, discussions, public comment on these and other designations. And so um, it's all still in draft form, but we want to use a formal process to make things like changes to SEDs because those were designated um some years ago after a planning commission designation, so we need to like ground that in a formal process and the criteria to be safe.
Right. Okay, uh, is everyone seeing a PowerPoint?
Yep.
Great, okay. Last slide for you, so following up from previous meetings, uh, there are a number of changes that were requested in the draft and discussed by planning commission uh that I went and ran to ground. And they appear to be conceptually consistent with SMP guidelines, just things I wanted to verify. And potentially might require some additional language in the SMP uh or clarification in order to implement, which is a conversation we can come back and have. This is, by the way, my intent for doing this is just a brief report. You will, you will revisit these items as part of that last little punch list before we get to hearing, but I'm just reporting back for you. Uh, so allowances on relocating existing structures. Uh, the question was, you know, if if you have a a legally existing structure. Uh, so allowances on relocating existing structures. Uh, the question was, you know, if, if you have a, a legally existing structure that is within the buffer of the shoreline and someone wants to move it back, but they don't want to move it all the way out of the buffer to become, come in compliance with the SMP, what is our latitude to do that? So the, the big message there is that non-conforming or whatever we call them legally existing structure regulations are discretionary for counties. So the, the county has latitude to do what's appropriate or what it believes is appropriate. So if the planning commission wished to make an allowance to say you want to move a structure back, but not require it to come all the way out of the buffer, you can do so. Um, you may want to consider whether there are specific circumstances where that applies, uh, where it wouldn't apply. Uh, and whether a variance may be required. Uh, but right now I think that the um, language for legally existing structure says if you move it, it's got to come out. So the question is, do you want to put more sideboards on that or not? And, and we will come back and revisit that, but conceptually uh, can be done. Same goes for allowances for expanding non-conforming structures. The question here was if you're going to expand a legally existing structure, non-conformity, um, it was limited to 500 square feet in the draft. Uh, and the question was, could we change that? Could we make that to the entire width of the structure? Uh, so larger than 500 square feet? And the answer is yes. Again, these standards are discretionary to the county, so it's up to the county to propose standards. Uh, you can allow structures to expand the width of the existing structure. Uh, as with all provisions in the SMP, we'll need to demonstrate how that meets no net loss and also we'll make sure that the mitigation language is, is reviewed appropriately because currently even with the 500 square foot limitation, um, if, you know, there's still mitigation required. Uh, so we'll just take a look at that and make sure that it's updated if, if necessary, but um, the next version of the draft, you know, will have that change made. Uh, eliminating the construction setback. So currently, uh, let's say that you would have 150 foot buffer on your shoreline to build a house. The draft currently says in addition to that, there's a 15 foot construction setback so that the, the effective setback of your home from the water would be 165 feet. Now, after construction, that 15 feet uh, closest to the home is no longer a buffer. It can be used for landscaping, whatever you want to do with it. Um, it was intended to protect the buffer during development. Uh, but we, the county is not required to have that as a standard in the SMP. So the planning commission asked if you wish to remove that, uh, you can do so. Uh, the effect there and if, is that essentially you, you end up with a smaller buffer potentially. Um, and so we ultimately and globally have to, to demonstrate that our buffers and our whole program meets no net loss. Uh, but this would essentially be, you know, a shrinking of the effective setback from the water. So again, you may want to consider what circumstances it's most appropriate in, if there are circumstances that it's not appropriate in and, and consider some language to limit the encroachment into the buffer during construction. And what sort of mitigation would be required for the temporal impact? So you know, if you do end up impacting the outer 10 feet of that buffer while you're building and remove vegetation, what sort of standards would be in place to restore that buffer? Uh, view blockage standards, uh, we are not required to have them. The county is not required to have them. So if the planning commission wants to remove that language, you can. Uh, the goal of having that sort of language is to limit legal disputes among landowners, uh, which the county can become embroiled in uh, through permit appeals. This may be something uh, staff might recommend that the planning commission consider rather than making this a, a change, potentially make it a uh, option for the public hearing because this, this more than some of the others, I could potentially see a lot of public interest in of folks who are interested in protecting their existing views. So take that for what it's worth, but you might consider making it an option versus um, proposing to strike the language. And then uh, limiting public access. So the question became, uh, if you develop a new subdivision and you put six lots on the shoreline and you're required to do public access, what does that entail? What is the scope of that public access? Who gets to bring their inner tube down there? Uh, and if essentially we, the, the county can limit that access to the newly created lots in most cases. Uh, and this is one that I'm gonna have to flesh out a little bit more before we talk about it again, but generally speaking, new development does not have to provide universal public access. Uh, I did bring this up with Sarah. Uh, Sarah Castle from ecology and she said, you know, there could be, we could see some challenges in instances where you have sort of a historic uh, public access use of a, of a shoreline. You know, it's, it's, people have known for years, they can park their car at this bridge and walk down the shoreline and whatever, you know, that sort of thing. Once that access is established, um, there could potentially be challenges if you propose to remove general public access. And I, that's this piece I want to get more information for you on because I know that the planning commission, uh, there was a broad interest from the planning commission in not, not letting everyone and their mother come down because you've developed a shoreline. So that I'll have some more information for you on that, um, when we discuss it next. And that, uh, that gets to my updates from previous meetings. So now, um, we can go ahead and uh, continue moving through chapter 19500 if that is pleasure of planning commission. I will stop sharing this and start the other. Take a moment here. Got it. Okay, hopefully we are seeing the SMP document. All right, so I have my note here where we ended in last meeting. So we will go ahead and start uh, with, I don't know what our number is here. Uh, section 19500, 100, letter C. So I, again, I think the best approach here is just to kind of go bold section by section and ask, uh, or contain the conversation to one section at a time. So does anyone have any comments uh, within uh, section C here?
Uh, I'm, I'm all the way down to two E. I don't know if anybody has anything before that.
Okay.
On, on two E, it says the county may attach conditions to the approval of exempted developments. I'm still having a really hard time getting my mind wrapped around how something can be exempted, but then you can put conditions on it.
So these exemptions here are um, carved out from state law. So uh, the legislature has said these things are exempt. They are not substantial development for the purposes of the program if they meet all the fine print below, right? But uh, but jurisdictions also have the ability to, while it may not require a substantial development permit, it could require a conditional use permit. The legislature makes that authority in the WAC and a good example of that here. And so when it talks about putting conditions on development, I mean, that's exactly what a conditional use permit would do or a variance would potentially do, right? Um, and so uh, a bulkhead is a good example. So a normal traditional bulkhead that is necessary to protect an existing single family residence, that is exempt from needing an SDP uh, in this list. Um, but as the draft is written, it currently requires a conditional use permit. And so in that instance, you know, you could potentially see conditions put on that because that's what happens with a conditional use permit, but.
Oh, okay. I, I, my apologies. I was getting myself wrapped around the axle on this that, so that's the lead in to making the existence of a conditional use permit.
Uh. You know, and I'm not sure, I, I'd have to go back and look at the WAC to see if that specific clause is originating in the WAC or not, but when I read that, I mean.
Okay.
Have some conditions, okay.
Makes sense in my head. No, I, that's good enough for me, I guess.
Great. All right, um. Anything else in this section? Um, number three here is pink, meaning it's quote unquote new, but I think I just moved it. I just moved it up based on a comment from ecology. Seemed to make more sense to be there.
Question your own, and uh, three or, or four A. Seven thousand and forty, forty seven dollars. It, it seems terribly specific.
Yeah, um. And so that, again, that language, so the legislature updates the dollar amounts for these things. Um, you know, they look at that based on, I guess, inflation and whatever other monetary factors they look at. I know at one point it used to be 5,000, now 7,047. So it, it's frequently updated to keep pace with inflation and that's why. So this comes straight out of, out of the WAC or might even be the RCW, or no, it says WAC, uh, 17327040. But you're correct, it is oddly specific.
So in that same section and um, for H, I'm just kind of wondering in the exceptions and saltwater is only $2,500, but in the freshwater dock, it's probably $2,500?
Right.
11,200? I'm just wondering why such a wide disparity?
Uh, I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head. Um, potentially it could have to do with um, salmon, you know, saltwaters, Puget Sound versus lakes and rivers. Um, but I can run that to ground. Uh, and I, I'll tell you what, I will do so because uh, you are definitely not going to be the only one to have that question. So let me make a note of that and.
But Sarah said when we discussed this before was that basically they don't want anybody building docks in a marine environment. That's why it was set so low. She was point blank with that.
Don't want to?
Pardon me?
They don't want to?
They do not want uh, residential uh, docks in the marine environment. So they want to force you to do a pretty cut. And they want to, so.
Well, I will see if I can find a more fleshed out answer to that. Because I think that would be, I mean, I could see that being, you know, a, a question we get asked at a, a open house or, or in a public hearing.
Well, these dollars are specifically spelled out in the WAC.
Right.
The section directly from the law, so.
Right. Oh, I know. I'm just saying if, if, if there is rationale behind it that I can glean, um, you know, I, I would like to do so.
So Doug, when you say they, you, you're alluding to ecology or?
Yes. Yeah, Sarah from ecology. She sat in our meeting. Um, Andy, what, so you can do just about anything you want for under, as long as it's under 7,047 dollars? I mean, as long as you're not, as you're abiding by the rest of the document.
Yeah, there's some other, other considerations. I think, you know, you can't, um, so yeah, uh, where's it say here? So if such development does not materially interfere with the normal public use of the water or shorelines of the state. So again, yeah, it, it is exempting those things um, from an SDP, not necessarily any other permits the county would potentially um, require, but that's, that's what it says here.
One, one of my concerns that I brought up before is that, you know, understanding the administrative permit and all that stuff, but we'll get into that in the next chapter because because everybody needs to remember all this section is doing is, is exempting it from an SDP, not any other permits.
Right, right. And there, yeah, there is still sort of that, that broad discussion the planning commission needs to have about uh, any, anything that's a conditional use permit or a variance. Um, you know, looking at it through the lens of making it administrative versus keeping it as a full blown conditional use permit or variance. That's been approached several times. So we, we need to nail that down before, you know, we're done and ready for public hearing. So.
Andy, four B?
Wait, oh, okay, go ahead.
That, that's where we've already inserted it in another place, but in here it'd be another place to, to insert remodel or reconstruction. The normal maintenance or repair, remodel or reconstruction.
Mm hmm. Okay. Um, like for, yeah, for clarity's sake, we could, we could look at that. Um, I I want to make sure that, because there is some language that talks about when replacement is considered repair and when it's not. So there might be that caveat to put there. Um, but.
You can reconstruct and you can remodel in the same footprint without a, without a permit from the SMP.
Mm hmm. Okay.
So you definitely noted, don't need an SDP.
But as you say, remodel and what was the other one?
Remodel or reconstruction.
In same footprint, right?
Yeah. Yeah, I don't, you know, you go outside of that footprint, you gotta, you gotta, could do a lot of different things.
Yeah, I, and again, I think for the sake of that being something that would potentially bring clarity to people reading this document, um, I think that's a good thought. So yeah, um, barring any compelling reason why we can't do it, uh, I will make that change.
And then uh, on C, is there any science that, that, that says that erosion of shoreline in a lake does not take, does not um, take away from the shoreline function?
Uh. I'm not sure. I mean, I know that uh, I'd have to look at the WAC to see the specific functions that are ascribed to lakes versus, you know, Puget Sound or streams. Because you, when you think about it, you think of the ro- active erosion uh, being a function of those environments, right? You know, feeder bluffs on the sound and channel migration zones on streams. But um, you know, I do know that the, the, the lead, and we've had this discussion, but like, looking at the standards for um, shoreline stabilization in the WAC, I mean, they, they do not make a distinction. So they have guidance in there. That master program should and shall, et cetera, et cetera. They don't make, they don't parse it between the environments.
Right, but if we chose, I mean, we have eutrophic lakes in Thurston County. Eutrophic lakes are dying lakes and the more erosion we have, the quicker it dies. Um, and so you, you could make a case for in Thurston County and specifically on freshwater lakes, that the shoreline ecological function is actually le- conserved or even improved by having a bulkhead.
Or maintaining uh, habitat and protecting it?
Protecting, yeah. Fish with all the crap in the water.
Uh, I mean, so I would want to look at the, all those standards that are in the WAC before answering that conclusively because I know there are there's language in there about, so further in the development standards, we talked about how um, shoreline stabilization cannot be used to protect but generally speaking, um, existing lawns, landscaping, et cetera. It's really tied to a structure. Uh, what I want to run to ground is if that came from the WAC or if we have, if the planning commission has the wherewithal to change that. Um, that would be good. So that would be something I would be interested. Um, if that's something that the nodding heads want to have me look at, um, I can do that, so.
And, and I ask that only specifically for lakes, because I understand the, in a river and, and in the marine environment for the difference, but.
Um, and I'm trying to think if that is better. Okay, so you're saying, and then, well then, and I don't know that we can get away from, so the, again, this is state sanctioned exemptions from SDP. I, so potentially could we get to allowing that? I think that's an easier road potentially than saying it's allowed and exempt from an SDP because this language is not allowing that. Um, but I will look into that. Um, so I think that's probably a note better suited for chapter 600. Well, let me just put it here because I'm here. Um. Okay.
Yeah, the, the WAC, the WAC says specifically the protection of the structure. I mean, the way it's worded is the way the WAC says, but I think
Yeah.
way you described it, Andy, of handling it in a different way later um, might be the way to do it, so.
Yeah, I, I'm just making a note here because I'm here, but I'm also going to write it down, um, just so that it's not lost. Because after the meeting, I. Because after the meeting, I, I go back and I make a list of things that I need to either research or that you guys ask for, and I just, yeah, I don't want to lose that, so. Okay, and yes, I know we have had multiple discussions there, so let's get some resolution on it. Okay.
Next one is G. Does anybody have any, something, anything before that? Um, could, Andy, can you explain the septic tank thing? I, I don't know what the setback is for septic tanks and need to keep septic tanks away from the shoreline, so.
Right. Well, and again, so any of these, uh, any of these developments that are going to be allowed are still subject to development standards in the document. So just because this section does not require an SDP for you to do a septic tank with your home does not mean that all the other provisions don't apply. So there's still going to be a buffer uh, and the development standards for residential development, that's where you can kind of get at specifying, you know, that level of, of well, that level of specificity, right? So if the, if the planning commission wants to focus on keeping septics further back from the shoreline, and that is your direction, um, there's other places to do that, I think. This is just saying that um statewide, if you're talking about the appurtenances that go along with a single family residence, that, that could be exempt from uh, an SDP, it includes septic tanks in that basket.
Andy, I'm, I'm with Doug on this. I don't, um, I don't know exactly the best way to do that, but if we can have this SMP somehow reflect that we would like to have septic tanks and drain fields farther away from the shoreline, uh, I think that's a great thing.
Okay.
I get what you're going, does that come out in the permitting process? Or is it somewhere else? I think this is just talking about what is part of the appurtenances, so.
It could, right, so, care of. I, you know, I don't know what, how the county is doing now.
And I don't know, and there's other things to keep in mind, too, is that envi- you know, environmental health department places its own limitations on septics. If you're on a well, for example, your well and septic have to be, I believe, at least a hundred feet apart, last I looked. Um, there's other things, and also, you know, as you get closer and closer to a shoreline, you may encounter conditions where a septic tank's just not really going to fly. It gets wet, right? The ground is wet, it's not going to perk. So there are some, some common sense type things like that, and some other regulations that are going to affect where these things can go. Uh, but again, it's your buffers that are gonna dictate that. So if your buffer is fifty feet uh, and depending on where we land on the construction setback, then, you know, you're going to be able legally to cite a septic tank closer to the shoreline with a fifty-foot buffer than you would in a designation that has a hundred and fifty-foot buffer. So, but, but again, all that gets addressed, uh, I would point to the development standards in chapter six hundred. So when we get there, um, you know, if there isn't already language in there to the planning commission's liking that addresses that point, you know, that's, I think, where, where you could have that discussion. But I will make a note of it. Okay, just documenting for posterity here that we will have that conversation when we get down to the belt and standards. Okay, um, onward, who's got another comment?
Under H, you had, you'd already said that you were looking into the concept of excluding permit fees from the dollar amounts here. So we don't have an answer. You thought that we could, so.
I don't think it's included. I mean, it, it.
Well, Sa- Sarah said yes. And when we had her in the, in, in the, our meeting, you know, she just said it real quick. I don't know that she really considered it, but.
Yeah, I, you know, I asked her about, um, somewhere else in this language where it talks about docks. It might have been docks. I think I asked her, that might be one of those things again, where I think I might have, I might have a different answer than, than what you might have, but uh, let me, let me check that. But my, my operating assumption is that permit fees are not included in cost of project.
That's what you had said, I think, last meeting. I just wanted to confirm it since we're going through this section.
Okay, all right, fair enough. Let me document that, um, because I know there's been interest in that from the public as well.
And then H, I, I what? B, just below B, and it says, however, subsequent construction occurs within five years of completion, you gotta add it in. Does that mean if you wait six years, you can do it? I just, I just want clarification is all.
Potentially.
Okay, that's what I figured, but I just um, just significant, I mean, that's a long time, so.
Right. Yeah, I mean, to, that seems to be the threshold that's, that's applied here. Uh, yeah.
I, when I read that, though, if, if after five years, I'm thinking I gotta start over again as far as a new permit and all that stuff, so that's where I is there a, that's the way I read that.
I mean, you, I think, yeah, regardless, you would need a new per- if you, if you get a permit and you, and you build your dock, and then two years later, you do it again. Um, this is saying that you would factor both of those in a- as to whether it triggers an SDP. If you wait six years, potentially, it would not trigger an SDP. But, but, you know, this might be a good point to remind everyone that there are significantly other regulations that would need to be met for docks and not just from the county. I mean, that's, you're talking state and potentially federal approval if you're on the marine shoreline, so. Um, an SDP is one piece of that, uh, and that's all this is speaking to. Right, anything else in this section? Okay, so letter D, if no one, if, if we're moving on, uh, letter D, conditional use permits, including administrative conditional use permits. Anyone have comments in this section? Not. Letter E, which is variances and administrative variances.
Andy, the, um, I know we had, you've got in chapter six hundred, um, a variant, uh, administrative cup. And we've talked about an administrative SDP. Do we need to include that here? Because, I mean, there's, we shouldn't have to have a hearing examiner involved in an existing residence adding a dock to that exceeds the dollar amount. There's no, I mean, we don't need that expense. You, planning department should be able to take care of that.
Yeah, and I think, oh, some, I thought we had, I thought we might have had something in here somewhere. Well, you know, it might be in the use table. I don't want to scroll too much, make everybody dizzy. Um, but I think, I think the planning commission has the, the uh discretion to propose that. And that's kind of what I'm envisioning as part of our review of six hundred, is taking that screen to the different um uses and, and, you know, looking at, are these administrative, uh, or are they going to require hearing examiner review? And based on, you know, we'll see which, whatever prevailing, whichever mindset the planning commission wants to go at it as is to assume they're all going to be one unless there's an exception or by itself. Um, but that's my understanding is that there's discretion, and I know ecology is not concerned about that necessarily because uh, anyway you slice it, um, you know, for a conditional use permit or variance, they ultimately approve it. Uh, the county's not the final stop. So different jurisdictions have taken different approaches.
So I'm, I'm guessing that we'll have to make some changes in the section E.
Absolutely, yeah. And so, so kind of there are some changes that will cascade throughout, depending on how that conversation turns out. Kind of, it's kind of like the non-conforming stuff, right? If, if, if the planning commission gives formal direction to change to something, it's going to cascade throughout the document. And the same goes here. Uh, once we settle kind of conceptually on those different uh permits that are going to be required for different things, then um that might change some of this um language that's up front in this chapter. So. Yeah, uh, so I think you said something about letter E, maybe? If not, we'll keep going. And letter F, uh, anyone, letter F, I believe this was the state said, put this in, because it's from some WAC, somewhere, I could track that down, but um, any comments on letter F?
I just put a big question mark on the whole thing, because I don't, I guess I don't understand why um, government gets excluded from the shoreline permit. They're impacting the shoreline, they ought to have to do something about it.
Trying to see if I can find my notes for that specific section. Uh, oh wait, it's a hundred F. Uh, this was added because it is a, this language is required per the periodic update, which is a portion of the, um, our comprehensive update. So, you know, there is a guide, there's a guidebook that explains all the things, anything that we have to put in or, you know, for the periodic update, um, there's a, there's a book that goes along with that and kind of explains the rationale. So if you're interested, I could send you a link to that and for more background. But all I know is that, you know, this section is a requirement as part of the periodic update, and, you know, we put it in, we checked the box on the checklist that we added it, ecology's going to be looking to see this language in the master program. But I can send you.
Ecology's handbook?
Not the, it's not in the handbook, uh, not, not the SMP handbook, but it is in the, so, uh, there's the periodic update that all jurisdictions have to do. Uh, there's a guidebook that goes along with that update that sort of says, here's the language you gotta put in, if there's specific language or here's at least concepts you have to include, uh, and then the rationale for why, whether there was a state law that was changed or et cetera. So that's got all the background. Um, I'll send that out to the planning commission. That might be a good resource just for you guys to have. Because some of these changes that you're going to see, and specifically a lot of the stuff that's in pink that's kind of newer, is based on my looking at, okay, what do we have to add to this document to be in compliance with, um, the periodic update requirements?
Thank you.
Yeah.
So the boatyard one kind of bugs me. That one where they don't they're not required to get a permit when they're doing stormwater or, or.
So, again, that would be not that would be, uh, not a shoreline permit, but there are other agencies that are going to overseeing, you know, work that goes on around the shoreline. Um, and I mean, if you look at that, the boatyard one, essentially what that's saying is if you're doing things that, if you're making improvements to a site to meet requirements of your NPDES permit. So that's a, you know, a good thing theoretically.
I totally agree with that. I guess it's just the oversight of how they're doing it. Would be my.
Well, so maybe, I don't know, let, let's all, let, we can all take a look at that, uh, that guidebook, and maybe there's better explanation for it than I, I understand it's kind of just like smacking you in the face here. Um, the, the book might give some good context for that. So. All right. Nineteen five hundred one oh five, uh, procedure, so we'll go with letter A, permit process summary. Summary of the process that applicants will go through. Uh, again, this is one where I don't know if anyone has comments or questions about, for example, the, uh, 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 pre-application or the, um, God, you know, anything in here about hearing examiner and pre-sub and all those sorts of things, um, again, it's going to be pending, depending on where planning commission lands on various things.
I like that this is informational purposes only, and I really like your flow chart. But um, the only thing, or one of the things in there that, that it almost implies everything has to have a hearings examiner. When you're, when you're reading through A before the flow chart, um, number seven, it says a hearing date will be set before a hearing examiner, and, and obviously, there's a lot of stuff that won't go before hearings exam.
Well, and so again, I think, uh, as the draft is currently written, I think that's a true statement, right? I think the vast majority of these things as written would go through hearing examiner review. But what the planning commission is entertaining is to make those changes. And if those changes are made to the draft, then um, this will change as well. I mean, it's still, it's still going to be a true statement that if, if you need a full-on conditional use permit, that you need hearing examiner review. Um, but, you know, not all permits would go through that lens potentially if the planning commission decides to make.
Well, and number one, it says even, even for exemption, so it's for permit or exemption, and by seven, it says hearing examiner. Even the way this is written, an exemption's not going to have to go to a hearing examiner, is it?
Yeah, it shouldn't need to.
Why, why don't we just say a hearing date?
If required.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
If required, yeah, that makes a lot of sense.
Uh, I agree.
Seven and eight.
Yeah, hold on. Pretty pink on the fly, but it doesn't, doesn't remember my color choice. There we go. I'll come back and. Hang on. Uh, so title twenty-sixty, um, outlines the public notification requirements for, for county permit proposals. And depending on what your type is, type, you know, one through five, um, there are different notice requirements. So sending notice to the neighbors versus, um, and how far you need to go. So we can go back and look at that. Uh, I can, you know, I, I would encourage you to go to twenty-sixty, because it, it, it goes through the different permit types, and for each permit type, there's a different prescription for public notice requirements.
But if we can, if we had a, uh, administrative SDP, it wouldn't, you wouldn't have to notify.
If, if you had an administrative SDP, the public notice requirements, if any, could be different than, than the full-blown SDP. Yeah, I don't want to say, you know, because you know, everyone knows those lovely yellow signs, public notice that get, get put out by the road. You know, it's, it's that sort of thing, and it's specifically, do you need to mail notice to neighbors or? And, and again, it's, it kind of scales up and down depending on the degree of the proposal. And as, you know, when we get up to a what, like a type four legislative update like this, you know, we are required to send notice to the newspaper and do all those sorts of things. So it just depends. But again, we're trying to tie, um, tie the shoreline permits to the existing permit structure just for consistency. So. Okay, so yes, obviously, some of this may change, or the flow chart may change, uh, or get new asterisks depending on where the plan lands with permit requirements.
Um, back up just a sec, and, and to A two, what, just to clarify for me, what is a contract purchaser?
Hmm, I'm not sure, uh, sure, it's a legal term, um, could mean someone who is under contract to purchase a property. I could find out for you. I, I honestly don't know. Um, but this is essentially saying it's the property owner or their agent, right? Someone who is authorized to, to make application for them. And actually, looking at this, it doesn't say that. So, you know, you might hire a permit consultant to run process for you. Uh, people do that, you know, this doesn't say doesn't say permit consultant or contractor or anything, so we might want to revisit that just to make it clear.
Yeah, I Googled it, and it just means any person acquiring fee simple title to a lot or lots by a real property contract to sale.
I guess until you own the property, should you be able to do something like that? And, and I, I also have a little bit of concern with Lee C. Does that mean? Does that mean if I'm leasing a piece of property from Dawn, I could do some kind of a permit without the owners knowing?
No, no, I don't think so because the general, the general application that accompanies any county application, we require that to be signed by the property owner. So I don't want to go out on a limb and say that that happens 100% of the time in all cases, and there are zero exceptions. But I know that the 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 application form has a space for property owner to sign and point of contact to sign because sometimes, you know, I like, I used to do a lot of the go-for-reviews, right? And you'd have, it's Mr. Smith's property, and so he signed the application. But the the point of contact is the septic designer, and that's the only person I would actually call and deal with. You deal with whoever they say is the applicant or the point of contact. But we do require landowners to sign applications. So I would, I would have to point back to whatever safeguards they have in place in the permit center to make sure that, you know, as a, like a renter, I could do something crazy through my landlord's property. So. Yeah. I'm going to make a note, though. Anything else in letter A or the the flow chart? Not. We'll go to pre-submission conference. We can maybe lump in B and C here, but again, so this says a pre-submission conference is required for any proposal requiring hearing examiner approval. But not all permits may end up requiring here examiner approval. So we'll see if that needs to be changed or anything based on where you land. Is there anything else in B or C? We'll move to, oh, it's really short. Let's look at D and E. Any comments in either of those sections? How about, let's do letter F first. Anything in letter F? I think that is a state law, and I know there's been questions about that clause in other sections of the document. And letter G. And letter H. Letter I, shoreline master program amendment. Letter J or letter K? Okay, 1950100 is enforcement and penalties. So anything in letter A or B? Or letter C or letter D? And if not, it looks like we've reached the end of chapter 19500. And that would be all that I have for you. Other than something I forgot to say at the top was you did receive two written public comments about the SMP ahead of this meeting, which were emailed to you and are also on the planning commission website. And that would include my comments.
Thanks, Andrew.
Thank you.
Oh, um, oh, yeah.
Oh, go ahead.
So I guess we're off to calendars? If I'm screwing up, Jennifer, just jump in there.
I don't know, I don't know, I'm not, I don't have the agenda in front of me. I know I'm staff updates, that's all I know.
Okay, so how about anybody not going to be here on the 21st or the third of February? Take our way, Jennifer.
Yeah, 20th. I think it's the 20th, right?
Yeah, you're probably right. We got a new calendar and I'm all screwed up.
It's the 21st year, the 20th day.
Did you record the answer to that, Polly? Okay. I didn't hear anyone.
For what now?
For who, if people were going to be here or not for the 20th or the.
Everybody was going to be there, right?
Yeah. I'll be there. Hey, Jennifer, all you.
Okay, staff updates. This is where, this January is when you do elections of your chair and vice chair. So this is how we normally do it. At this meeting, we asked for a couple of volunteers from whoever shows up. So that's amongst you to poll your fellow planning commission members. And if you need their contact information, Polly can provide it to ask their interest in being nominated for chair or vice chair. And obviously, if you're talking to someone who's currently chair or vice chair, if they have an interest in staying. And so that nominations can be made from this little nominating subcommittee of two at the next meeting, which is January 20th. So we need two folks to volunteer to kind of split up the group and talk to people and then talk to each other about what they heard and then make nominations on the 20th, if that makes sense.
We nominate people to do that work?
Can nominate the nominators, yeah. Anyway, you like it.
We nominate you.
I knew it. I knew it. I've done it before, and I think Raul and I did it last year, maybe.
Raul and I did it together last time.
Oh, okay, so maybe it was two years ago. It's all starting to blur here. I have a five-year-old and it complicates things, you know, as far as responsibilities and.
I can do it if there's a need.
Thanks, Eric.
There you go.
So Doug and Eric are doing it?
Thanks, guys.
So do you want to know, do you want to just split people up now so you know?
Well, we can do it, but we'll just do it, but if you could send us the phone number so we can call them.
Okay. Polly, if you could get those to Doug and Eric, that'd be good.
Yep, I will send that to you tomorrow.
Thank you. That's all I had. I just wanted to remind us of the elections on the 20th.
Great, yeah. Thank you. So any other new business, anything you guys need to talk about?
Oh, wait, I do have one more thing. I'm so sorry. So, no, we have a new, a new commissioner, Carolina Mejia. So just so you know, she's, she started, she's off and running. She's been assigned to about a million committees as they do. And then we're going to, you know, be briefing her about what all we do in long-range planning and getting her up to speed on the docket when we have a kind of mid-docket cycle check-in with the board in later in February. So, yeah, so just a reminder that we do have a new commissioner. That's it.
Before she finds something else, return 810. See you, guys.
Good night.